And good evening, everyone. The hour of 6:00 PM having arrived, I'd like to call this November 4th, Borough Council of Carlisle Workshop to Order, and we will begin with a Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. All right, continuing with our agenda, next up is Citizens to be Heard. Are there any borough residents or friends of the borough that would like to make a statement on borough government? Or any issues involving borough government at this time, please step forward or let us know and we'll unmute your mic. Everyone must be focused on the election. So, all right. Moving on, next item, I will entertain a motion for council to approve the September 30, 2020 workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Deb Fulham-Winston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. First up on our agenda is the mayor's report, and I have a resolution from council, which I will read, and then I will make a motion on the adoption of this resolution. Carlisle Borough Council apologizes for any and all past participation in the sanctioning of segregation and systemic racism toward African Americans and other people of color, particularly in relation to the events that led to the removal of all grave markers and headstones except one in the Lincoln Cemetery in 1972. Lincoln Cemetery was the final resting place for at least 650 Black Carlileans from circa 1804 to 1905, and includes physicians, educators, and more than 50 United States colored troops who were members of the Union Army and Civil War veterans. Fleeter Jordan sought to maintain the history of this sacred land and petitioned local government as evidence in various Sentinel Archives and personal general reflections to being successful only in the remaining Jordan headstone that has pointed the borough's history to a truth that cannot be denied. The ashes of Barry Keith Campbell were interned on this site in 2002, and Lincoln Cemetery, the story down under, was authored in 2011 by Janet Bell and served as contemporary reminder of the significance of the Lincoln Cemetery. It is important that we, as elected leaders of borough government, take accountability of our past and recognize the damage caused by some of the worst chapters in our community's history that was inflicted upon generations of Carlisle residents, those interred, and descendants thereof. Right now, we're moving forward as a more compassionate, caring, and inclusive community, which means acknowledging the suffering and pain caused by centuries of discrimination and racial inequity in borough government and the auspices over which she has jurisdiction. Borough council staff, members of the US Army War College, the Class of 2019, Cumberland County Historical Society, and representative descendants of those who were laid to rest in Lincoln Cemetery came together in the summer of 2019 to begin the process of returning that land into the sacred ground it once was. Healing will begin as we educate ourselves about the past, recognize its impact on the present, and move forward towards a more equitable future for all. Now therefore be it resolved, Borough Council issues a long overdue acknowledgement of the borough's history, including choices that were made, actions that were taken, and legislation that was passed and reflects upon its present objectives, policies, and goals related to the protection of all individuals from racism. And be it further resolved, Carlisle Borough Council, together with the Borough Manager and the Carlisle Borough Human Relations Commission, will continue to plan for an open community dialogue, incorporating awareness and education regarding racism in the borough of Carlisle, with its first conversation to be held in the first quarter of 2020. Therefore, I move that council adopt the aforementioned resolution, acknowledging and apologizing for any and all past participation in sanctioning of segregation and systemic racism toward African Americans and other people of color, particularly in relation to the events that led to removal of all grave markers and headstones except for one in the Lincoln Cemetery in 1972, and acknowledging the suffering and pain caused by centuries of discrimination, racial and racial inequity in borough government, and the auspices over which she has jurisdiction. I so move.
I can second that motion.
You know what? We'll take both, seconded from Ms. Landis and Mr. Deputy Mayor as well. Any discussion on this? We'll open it up.
I will make some comments. So I am, I sit on the Lincoln Cemetery Committee as well as Andrea Kraus from Parks and Recreation and Borough Manager Susan Armstrong, and it is made up of descendants, community members that are invested, Hope Station Representative of Cumberland County Historical Society, and we've been working together, as you mentioned in the resolution, the work that was done in 2019 with the War College Class of 2019 that funded the gate, the archway that goes into the cemetery now. So what I will say is I will, I do want to give credit to Twanda Stallworth for bringing this back around to us because it is something that we had talked about in those committee meetings, and the resolution did not make its way forward as swiftly as it should have. So she did bring it back around to us, and Mayor Scott did a great first draft, but this did go back to the whole committee, and Twanda helped do some wonderful edits, and then the whole committee also worked together just earlier this week to make sure that this is reflective of what they feel is important to be said, as well as, you know, Borough Council and our government to ensure that we are honoring this space and those people and the descendants in our community in the way that we should. And I will say a couple other quick things. The Historical Society has a grant that they're finishing up. So if you haven't been to the cemetery recently, they have a mural that Jim and Karen from Creative Palooza have been working on. And in our meeting, I will also give credit to how quickly our lovely borough staff work. The question was that could we make the flagpole a little bit better? So in no time at all, Andrea and Dave Eister have already taken it down, and it's getting sandblasted and powder coated, and it's going to be beautiful. So these are a whole bunch of things that are happening all together, and we did discuss having this resolution posted on site. Some of those placards, some of those monuments and informational panels that are in the cemetery, we've talked about upgrading, so I think we don't have it finalized right now, but they do agree that this could be posted publicly so that people know forever that we understand what we have done over time and that we're doing what we can to make it right, or at least acknowledging. So that's going to be a work in progress, but that is something that we're looking forward to having, and it is a continual work, and this is not the end of anything, that we are continuing to make sure that this space is honored and cared for the way it should be.
All right, thank you, Brenda. Any other comments on this?
Just a couple things. I mean, I don't want to reiterate everything that Brenda said so well, but I do want to recognize that Twanda Stallworth did ask us for this about a year ago, and maybe underscore that, and apologize for us not getting to it much sooner than this. Additionally, since the opportunity best arises here, just an update on the town hall on racism that we've been discussing. Just very briefly, we are still working to find some, an overflow venue. I should, by the time our regular council meeting rolls around, at least have a target time period when we'd be looking to hold it. So that's news coming relatively soon. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Any further comments from council on this? Mentor of mine in the State House once said that if a politician tells you something was his idea, you should run, not walk, the opposite direction, and I can't emphasize that enough with Twanda and her idea to do this and to further our goal of recognizing Lincoln Cemetery as a sacred space that deserves to be preserved forever.
It does look like Twanda wants to have a comment after this, after we pass it.
Yes, that's my next order of business, so I will now call the question. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Ms. Stallworth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Deputy Mayor, Counselor Landis, and all of Borough Council. So I'm very grateful that my camera is not on so that you can't see me ugly, doing ugly cries right now, plus you guys might do something to my rap if you guys saw me crying right now. So, but I did just want to say a couple of words in appreciation for your commitment, for your transparency, for your accountability, for your risk-taking, for your commitment. And I won't perpetuate the rhetoric of it's about time, this should have been done. The important thing for me, I think many others, is that we got here. And we could, you know, debate about what took so long to get us here and how we got here, but it's important that we're arrived, and we arrived at this evening. And at this point in our country's history, I don't think there's a whole lot of coincidence for where we are. I do just want to say that that timing is a factor. I do have the ability to be able to look at things in a different lens and provide some additional context to something that we may not have really thought about before. And that's the issue of Colin Kaepernick. And in 2016, Colin Kaepernick was damned, put down, blacklisted, eventually cut from the team for kneeling in response to police brutality. It was 2016, July 2016, I think it was the second week in July was known as Bloody Week because of all of the repeated incidents of homicidal police behavior in our country. That following fall, Colin Kaepernick began to kneel for the National Anthem, as was suggested by a former Green Beret, because in fact, there was a man down on the field in a more socially justice-minded context. Colin Kaepernick doesn't have a job. He's cut from the team, still continues to kneel, spark a movement. In fact, if you Google Colin Kaepernick, it won't say football player, it will say activist. Fast forward to 2020, when at the height of a pandemic, the nation was stuck with horror just how long, eight minutes and 46 seconds was, as we collectively watched George Floyd take his final breaths. Add to this our prayerfully now outgoing president fueling trends of white supremacy with comments following the events in Charlottesville, refusing to denounce white supremacist support has led us all to examine our racial biases and where we are as a country. Now, the NFL takes a knee. Now, it's appropriate to kneel during the National Anthem. Now, owners and players walk hand in hand, elbow in elbow to the field and kneel in honor of those who have lost their lives to these grave injustices. But Colin Kaepernick still does not have a job. As we move forward in these most honorable actions, these most demonstrative, beautiful ways of reconciliation in our community, let us be reminded that Colin Kaepernick does not have a job. No one is more excited about this momentum than me. And again, I'm grateful, and will limit the rhetoric of it's about time, what took so long, but I want us to remember that Colin Kaepernick still does not have a job. And racial and social justice cannot be invoked when it's on trend. Now the hard work begins. Now the work begins to give Colin Kaepernick back his job. Now the work begins to undo those things that were done before. Now begins, now is when the rubber meets the road. I applaud you, council. You've taken a bold step tonight. You've taken a brave move in moving this needle and moving this community into a direction that is so desperately needed. And I look forward to working along with you to see what we can do together to get Colin Kaepernick back his job. Thank you.
Thank you, Twanda. Thank you very much for those comments, and thanks to you and the entire committee for the work that they've done. It is really appreciated, and we're going to get there, I assure you. All right, next up, I have a mayoral proclamation for a former business owner here in Carlisle. Issuing a proclamation today for Wardeckers, Wardeckers Men's Wear and Formal Wear in downtown Carlisle, with the retirement of Fred Wardecker, who is owner and operator of Wardeckers. The store closed October 2nd, 2020. This merchant has been in operation since 1903 as a seller and purveyor of men's business wear. The store we know today began in 1964, and its closing truly marks the end of an era. And as recently noted, during the Wardecker years, with Fred's focus on customer service and always having the time to make sure everything was a perfect fit, even for a young high school junior who later go on to become mayor, who got his tuxedo for the prom from Wardecker. So that's a happy memory I have, and many other people have happy memories too of Wardecker's and the impact it had on this community, and Fred's impact too. So I just wanted to salute him with a mayoral proclamation, which we will deliver to Fred this week. So, thank you, everyone. Now, moving on to the Warm Handoff Project Letter of Support. This will be a way for this program, Warm Handoff, to receive federal funds, I believe. Does staff have anything they wish to say about this? Either this manager or Chief Landis?
Yes, Mayor. We were contacted by Jack Carroll of the county, who had a keen interest in applying for this particular grant. Again, it is, he envisions that it would be used for, in concert with the JFT Recovery and Veteran Support Services. And essentially, what they're looking to do is to, they've contracted with JFT, and they're hoping to essentially advance the program through this grant pursuit if they're awarded funds. And essentially, I don't know if Chief Landis wants to add anything, but I believe, if I'm correct, Mr. Carroll reached out to all the police departments within the Cumberland County area and received great support from all the chiefs of police for this particular program. And I know that Deputy Mayor Schultz also was privy to some discussion on this during a recent meeting that we had with the county on the co-responder program that we're exploring. And I don't know, Sean, if you have anything additional to add to that, but...
No, I think you summarized it. Thanks.
All right. That being said, I make a motion that council ratify a letter of support to Cumberland Perry Drug and Alcohol Commission in their pursuit of grant funding for the proposed Cumberland County Police Warm Handoff Program. Approval is retroactive to October 22nd, 2020, the date of the execution by yours truly, Mayor Scott. I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We have a motion second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all, and we'll move on to public safety. The topic of discussion tonight is decriminalization of cannabis, and I will turn things over to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Jeff Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for this evening's discussion, I will plan to first kind of go over the resolution that we have as a draft. Then I'll open it up to any public comment on that, and then I'll turn it over to council for discussion. There is a resolution that we have up on the borough's website. It does a few things, so it would essentially make possession of a small amount of cannabis, possession of cannabis-related paraphernalia, and smoking cannabis in a public location, all summary offenses under the Borough's Code, and then with fine penalties attached. So for the two possession offenses, the fines would each be $25, there would be $25 for those respectively. And then for smoking cannabis in a public location, the fine would be $100. Similar to Steelton, it would set this up as a one-year pilot program. After one year, council would then be able to evaluate the data related to its implementation, and then decide from there how to move forward, whether to extend the program or not. So that is an overview of what the ordinance itself does that we have as an initial draft. And like I said, it is up on the website for anyone to view. So with that, I will open it up to public comment if there is anybody on the call who is interested in sharing their views on this subject. And seeing no one right now, we can always come back if we're missing anyone. But I will then turn it over to council for Borough Council's thoughts, comments, questions. So I will open up the floor to anybody on council then.
Yes, Counselor Stube, I just had a quick question. If any thought yet has been given about what we would be tracking during the pilot period so that we could make an educated assessment a year from now that this is having the intent we expected?
Sure. So the resolution as it's drafted now would have a reporting feature requirement. So it would require the council receive a report on the total number of citations issued for violation under the ordinance. It would require that the report have a breakdown of the gender and race of each offender, breakdown of the total number of repeat offenders cited, that any challenges encountered during the course of implementation be listed, and that any recommendations to improve the administration or enforcement of the ordinance also be included for council to review. So that is what is listed in the reporting provisions of the draft ordinance currently.
Thank you. Is there any reason that that information wouldn't be readily available and, I guess, logged continuously through the normal process of, say, giving a citation? Would all that critical data be something that we would expect our police department to easily capture through the process of doing this?
Good question. I will maybe turn it over to either Chief Landis or Susan for your input on that.
Yes.
Can I start?
Yeah, thank you.
While we have the chief, and Deb, I'll kick it back to you, but unless you're going to ask the chief a question too, I just wanted to follow up on that. The ordinance calls for an annual report. Might it make sense to do that more frequently, even monthly or quarterly, and chief, doing it monthly or quarterly, is that, is it a great deal of effort to be able to provide the statistics on a monthly or quarterly basis?
No, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we can do that with the monthly report that you receive already of citations.
Thank you. Good. I have some more questions, but you had your hand up first.
Really just a comment. I like the idea of doing this as a pilot program so that we can actually have some data to work with that is fresh and so that we can have an opportunity to really talk to people about why we're doing this. But I do believe that it makes good sense for us to do this, and I hope we move forward with it.
Okay, I'll jump back in then. Thanks. You know, I've expressed before that I believe the way this country has dealt with addictive drugs has been a complete disaster for about a century. And I recognize the racial disparity in how those drugs or those drug crimes are enforced. And it's frankly, I think, a scar on this country's history that that has occurred. I'll also say that I have some concerns about dealing with this, what I'll say, symptom of systemic racism in this way, although I will support this ordinance. And the reasons for that are primarily what we're doing here is creating another layer of crime where a summary offense can be charged. The misdemeanor equivalent, I'll say, of the crime can continue to be charged, although our hope is through creating the summary offense, the misdemeanor will not be charged as much, and we've been informed that it's rarely, if ever, in Carlisle, charged on its own. But there is the potential, and this is part of the reason I asked for more frequent reports, that summary offenses are easier to write. And although summary offenses can show up on employment background checks, the potential ramifications of that may not be as severe as a misdemeanor one. But there's still an economic component to this. There are fines. So if this is happening more frequently, there's an economic impact on people, and I think we need to keep a close eye on that. It's $25, it's $100, but for people who may be living their lives paycheck to paycheck, that's a significant amount of money. So I want to make sure that we are getting frequent reports, and I'd like to see the ordinance revised to reflect that. The other concern, I suppose, I have with the ordinance that I think we need to keep an eye on over the pilot period of this is, and I don't believe this will come to fruition in this kind of case, we're not legalizing, and we're truly not decriminalizing the use of cannabis, is what secondary effects it may have in our community. And that's going to be tough to measure. So it's something else that I think we need to, the best we can, keep an eye on. There is science that suggests that there are some long-term effects of marijuana use, particularly on younger people. And I think we need to be sensitive to that, and it's a growing body of study in that area. But like I said, I'll certainly support, you know, once we get the revision with more frequent reporting, I would support this ordinance in the end. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, and Counselor Stube, thanks for pulling this together and for your work on this. And, you know, I'm in the camp with Sean, I think, you know, this is something I can get behind. I also just want to throw out to the group, I'm wondering, you know, when the time comes and we have the final debate on an ordinance and passage, if anyone would be open to maybe a side letter or two that we could share with the governor and the General Assembly, saying, hey, this is something locally that we're considering or at that point that we're doing, we would love for you all to come together and find a solution on the front end to either decriminalize. We would love for you all to come together and find a solution on the front end to either decriminalize, decriminalize or, or legalize, and then on the back end with record expungements, you know, things that we can't do. But I think that, that criminal justice component at a statewide level would be huge. And then also within that messaging, say, you know, if, if there's not a statewide law that could do that, we just saw last night, many states across the country, their voters took action on, on an issue like this. So just wanted to throw out the idea of, along with anything we do with this, if there's initial actions that we can urge at a statewide level, I think that would be beneficial.
I have one technical question, probably for Chief Landis, just in my own mind. Yep. Somebody who's found to have possession of a small amount of marijuana in, in their vehicle on a public space, is that considered public or private possession?
If they're smoking it in a public place, that's going to be considered in public.
Even if it's in their car?
If you're smoking it in your car, or there's other ramifications from that also?
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have much else to add. I think everyone has covered most of what I was thinking, or, and you brought up a lot of other good points. But I am in favor of, of this pilot ordinance, and I thank Counselor Stube for all the work he's put in on this. So thank you very much. I am in support.
Okay, thanks. I didn't, I think that's everybody. I didn't know if anybody else had any comments, so I-
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Because Joel brought something up that I hadn't really, hadn't really thought about, and, and just maybe a bit of an exchange with, with Joel. Because we, we define, I'm looking at the ordinance now, we define public space. So if there was a concern about, or if there was a desire, I should say, to not have public space to include possession within your vehicle, we could work that into the definition of the ordinance. I, I think the, the other ramifications that chief may have been talking about is there's much like driving after imbibing, there's, there's, there's that, that crime that's still, still on the, the state law. But if we're simply looking for a, a sort of restricting this ordinance so it doesn't apply in those circumstances, I think we can build that into it.
Yeah, so the, the current definition of public space, as it reads in the ordinance, is a street, alley, park, sidewalk, a vehicle in or upon any street, alley, park, or parking area, or any other place to which the public is invited. So I guess Counselor Hicks or Deputy Mayor Schultz, or would you suggest revising that definition or?
Actually, that kind of clears up the, I think that's, I think Chief Landis was sort of echoing that understanding, which it looks pretty clear to me. I mean, it was, wasn't clear to me until you, you know, read that, that being, being in a private vehicle doesn't supersede that private vehicle being on, on a public space.
Correct. That's one of the, the instances of what I was saying, that if you're on a street, on a public street, in a vehicle, that doesn't make you private all of a sudden. So, you know, just something to think about.
Even, even if I'm in my RV? I don't know. I'm just thinking a little, I think you answered my question.
Just one more thing. I just noticed the message that Ms. Stallworth put up. I think this does, if we, assuming we move forward with this, it really will require some public education of exactly what this means, that we are not somehow legalizing cannabis within the borough, that this is strictly a change in how we will be dealing with the people who are, you know, they're not, it's not going to be a misdemeanor, it will be a summary charge, but that people have to have a very good understanding of exactly what the ordinance does and does not do.
Exactly. And also, Ms. Stallworth also pointed out, for those of you that aren't on the Zoom chat, that fines lead to incarceration until they can be paid. So we also need to be sensitive to that as well. But otherwise, I, I do support the ordinance.
Thanks. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would agree with those sentiments and the need for some public education as it relates to this, if, even when we're moving forward. I, I also think Deputy Mayor Schultz's suggestion of increasing the frequency of the reporting makes sense, makes good sense to me. So based on council's comments and discussions, if everybody's on board with doing so, I would suggest that we make that revision to the ordinance as it's drafted, to change the frequency of the reporting period from annually to monthly. And then with that revision, advertise the ordinance for us to consider it at the December Borough Council meeting.
If there are no objections to that, so shall it be?
Sorry, I think Counselor Hicks had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, it was in reference to this last observation about fines. Just a quick, do we have the ability to use target fines for something like this to actually go back into public education? Or, or do, I mean, do we have that flexibility to, to use whatever revenues that are received to actually go back into doing, addressing some of the things that would mitigate this?
Sean Schultz, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fines, part of that goes to the magistrate. So there's a bunch of people that get their cut. So perhaps with our own portion that we do get to keep, we could certainly do that.
So there might be a part of it that we have the option to address some of these, these issues as we get, get more informed. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I didn't want that, 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 that idea to not, not get implanted as, as we think move forward.
No, I think, I think that makes sense. For clarity, and, and I don't know if, you know, staff or somebody on council would, would be able to clarify this. Would it make sense to revise the ordinance to stipulate that, i- is it something we could do to stipulate in the ordinance that any revenue the borough collects from fines through this ordinance would go directly towards public education on this issue? Is that something that we could add into the ordinance itself? Or would that not be something that would typically be put into an ordinance, rather would be more on the administrative end after an ordinance was implemented?
I, I would think that that could be something that we could make as part of the motion when we do vote, to make that part of the public record, how, where we want the, the proceeds from the fines to go.
Okay, yeah, and, and I'm comfortable. I mean, that, that seems, thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Hicks. I think that makes sense to, to do so. So with that, I mean, I guess I'll, I'll revert back to what I was saying previously, that I, I, if everybody's amenable to doing so, I think that we should revise the ordinance as it's drafted to increase the frequency of the reporting period, to make it monthly, and then advertise for consideration at December, if, at the December council meeting, if council is on board with you and so.
I believe I see some heads nodding, so yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess we'll turn that over to staff and the solicitor to make those revisions into draft and finalize a draft and advertise. And I think that concludes our discussion on this issue.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Stube. Moving on to Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff has been spending considerable time reviewing all of our permit fees to see whether or not they are appropriate, given the costs associated with those activities. And I'd like to turn this over to, I'm not sure exactly whom, to Mark Mallert, to give us a staff update on where we stand.
All right. Thank you. You have in your packet this evening a memo which identifies several of the permit application fees that the borough charges related to its infrastructure, its infrastructure being activities related to sanitary sewer, water mains, or, or roads, public roads. And in there, you'll see what our current fee is, the date that that current fee was established, and a recommendation by staff on what it should be going forward. This is being budget season, and we're looking at, you know, all of, all of our activities. And then a, a comment on whether that's due to just a, a, a adjustment due to inflation or due to additional staff time required over and above what was originally anticipated. The majority of the fees are relatively old, some were established in 1987. So just going through a normal inflation, it's, you know, you can increase it by 250%. But we did look at it from the standpoint of, you know, how much time staff typically spends on this activity and, and, you know, what that would be, just to reimburse the borough's cost for staff time and, and expenses related to, related to the activity. So those are listed in, in your, in table one. I did want to go into a little bit more detail related to street cut permits. So these are permits, a, a, either a utility or a, a contractor would pay to the borough to excavate within the borough street. And typically, that permit is meant to cover the cost to the borough for our staff to review the permit, to issue, and issue the permit, and then deal with the contractor for inspection. There is a table two in the memorandum that compares what we're recommending as far as what our fee should be to what other municipalities currently have in place in Cumberland County or, or surrounding area. And generally, our recommendation is to sort of to bring it up to what other municipalities are currently charging. The one outlier there is the Borough of Chambersburg, and, and they're somewhat unique because the borough staff in Chambersburg does the street restoration as opposed to the contractor for the utility doing that restoration. So there's, there's less time involved in that, and, and they have, they, they charge or they assess the actual cost to, to, to do the street restoration. The other issue that I wanted to point out in the memorandum under table two was the majority of the municipalities surrounding us require, with the permit application, financial security. And that financial security is meant to cover the cost that would be incurred if the borough would have to go and do the street restoration in the event that the utility fails to do it. In the majority of cases, the utility, the utility does the work. But sometimes we could have a contractor that just leaves and skips town and, and, and doesn't do the work, and we really have no way of going back and capturing that, that expense. So the recommendation there is that we do, going forward, require financial security to be placed upfront, equal to what staff would estimate the cost for, for the repair would be. I think you're muted.
Yeah, I was. Do you need us to take any particular action this evening?
No, I just was, was looking more for comments on whether, in, in, in going through this comparison, whether council would be open to increasing the fees. You know, they're pretty significant increases. But, you know, I think the, the time has, has come to do that.
I mean, it, the increases are there, but they strike me as fiscally responsible so that the borough is being reimbursed for the actions that it has to take related to the permit. So it doesn't seem wildly crazy to me. It seems responsible.
I, I, I agree with Councilwoman Fulham Winston. We are allowed to recover our costs, and it looks like staff's information and the research was very thoughtfully done. So I would not have a problem with us moving forward.
And anyone else on council with any questions or comments for Mark?
It just, it, it's clear to me this, they haven't been reviewed in a long time. I mean, if you look at just the inflation rate, oh my God. I, I would invite us to maybe do this more often. And, you know, we, we are allowed to adjust for inflation and things like that, and, and, you know, it's a real thing. So it just goes back to, you know, I, I think a reasonable reassessment is, is always advisable and, and, you know, judicious.
And perhaps this should become part of our budget process every year, that we look at this. And I'm sure many years they'll stay pretty much the same, but other years it may, because of other external factors, it may require that it goes up more substantially, but we should be staying on top of it because it's part of our responsibility.
I would agree, Counselor Fulham Winston. And this is our, just our first go at looking through some of the fees. There will be other departments that have also been tasked or will be tasked to look at respective fees in their particular departments. But as you see, a number of these have not been updated for many, many years. So we can certainly justify the recommended fees.
Makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
And if, if no one else has any other comments, and it sounds like my report is done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Budget and Finance.
Okay, and first, I move that Borough Council adopt a resolution taking action to amend the 2020 to 2024 budget to delete a disc mower and procure a leaf vacuum for use in borough parks and facilities.
Deputy Mayor Schultz has made a motion involving the 2020, 2024 capital budget. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay, my, my second motion is that I move to authorize the use of CARES funds issued by the County of Cumberland through its Renew Cumberland County Relief Block Grant Program for the execution of a contract with Illuminated Integration, CoStar's vendor contract number 034-085 for the purchase and installation of equipment needed to improve the Borough of Carlisle's virtual public meetings in an amount not to exceed $68,000 contingent upon the borough solicitor's satisfactory, satisfactory review and approval of the contract.
We have a motion second. We have a motion for the use of CARES funds that the borough received from Cumberland County. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this matter. Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll say this. I've, I've, I've been asked many times since the, the beginning of this pandemic and our, our move to, to Zoom and online options for public meetings, whether we'd go back to the normal course of business. And I've, I've told these, I've told people who have asked that I don't see this ever going back. I, I think the use of Zoom and, and live streaming has increased public participation in our meetings in, in, in a good way. And I think our, I'll reiterate too, as I've said before, I think our improved use of, of social media, thank you, Stephanie, has, has done a great service for, for our community. So I think this is a good, good move by, by Borough Council, should you, should you approve this. And, and we'll, we'll continue to, to, to improve on our, our transparency and communications with our constituency.
Absolutely. There are some exciting things to come, so stay tuned on that. I believe we have a motion and a second, so I will now call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we are now in new business. We invite anyone that has a- has a matter of Borough Government to, once again, step forward, if you're in the room here with us, or if you're on the Zoom call or Facebook Live, and talk to us about your All right, appears we don't have anyone, therefore, my next item on the agenda is to adjourn, thank you folks, we are adjourned.
Thank you.